This is our December voting meeting. I want to welcome everybody to the meeting this evening. And we're going to start with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, there will be no presentation. So before the prayer, voting meeting, we don't have a presentation on the agenda. So we're going to move directly into public comments. This represents an opportunity for anybody in the audience, for the public, who'd like to address the board, either matters, matters that are on the issues that are on the agenda, or any other topics that might be pertinent to the board here. Okay, so now we're going to move into our agenda. I want to remind board members that this is a consent agenda this evening. What that means is that we will be consolidating various actions within a single vote. So you may see items A through F, let's say, in a vote. If you see an item on the agenda that you would like to pull as a board member and have maybe further discussion on, or if you anticipate maybe it would be a vote that you would accept, we should pull that. We want to notify folks about that. Board members have new assignments, and I don't know if folks are comfortable serving in that capacity. Any new assignments, if they are, I would encourage you to introduce that very quickly. So whether it's personnel, business functions, whatever, if folks are comfortable with that, I would ask you to jump in on that. I'll be able to respond to that. We're going to start with minutes. It's recommended that the board's board members approve the minutes as listed in the agenda. Second, any discussion?
Oh, yes, I do have something. Excuse me, 11-19 voting meeting. Found at the... The second paragraph. Dr. Heimerger noted, "It is rare to recognize community members who spend countless hours working for the school district." I think that probably should be hours.
I think that's what I had.
Oh!
Anything else to add, Mr. Heimerger?
No.
Can I just ask that if you approve with that change? So, promotion has been... As we're noting on my application, there's a positive observation. All, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Treasurer's report. It's recommended that the board approve the treasurer's report and payment requests as noted in the agenda. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. School board actions. I'm going to break this one up. I'd like to take item A separately. The school director has recommended that the school board appoints Yuri Miller, a school board director, to the open position. The position is a two-year appointment that will expire in December of 2021. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome to the floor. Would you like to make any statements as our newest board? And tell us about your trip to Brazil.
Well, first of all, thank you guys for the opportunity. It definitely uses us to deepen upon the community and also the students and also the teachers. So that's what I'm here for. So I'm looking forward to a two-year term, and I think I'll learn some things. I'm hardly going to be lost half the time. But at the end, I hope to make some good decisions and, you know, definitely use it to definitely make our students better.
I know you're a little sleepy, right? You got in for it like this morning.
Yeah.
Disney.
Yeah, the kids did a great job. They did a wonderful job, the orchestra, the band, and of course, all three of those areas. And they actually got a lot of compliments for the tuxedos at the park. So they worked well with the landscape, with how things were.
Great. Well, welcome back to the agenda.
Thanks.
Okay, recommended the board directors approve items B, C, and D under school board actions. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board policies. We have one board policy for first reading under major items two, nine, our second reading. Recommended board school directors approve those policies as presented in the agenda.
Excuse me, Dave, I would like to pull out policy eight, for discussion, please.
Eight fifteen, okay. Anybody else would like to pull out? In the policies section. Okay, the first action to take would be approving policies listed one through eight on the agenda. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's recommended the school board school directors approve policy eighteen, acceptable use of Internet, computers, and network resources for second reading. Second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of items I'd like to bring up. Policy eight fifteen, acceptable use of computers, network, Internet, electronic communications, and information systems. As we know, in any of our policies, they allude back to either school regulation, other school policy, or even law. We have seen over the last couple of weeks where there've been some allegations made that some behavior allegedly of some students have posted some malicious content that has attacked the reputation of some of our school teachers, some of our faculty. And I believe that we should sort of take a deeper dive both on this policy as well as some other policies which are not up for discussion. But if you were to look at the information in policy eight fifteen, and then go back and look at the student handbook, which specifically calls out on page two that we do not tolerate harassment in any form, that this applies to personally owned equipment in use on-site in the school district, transmission of material likely offensive or objectionable to recipients, the administration reserves to write on this data, on cellular phones and other electronics with the reason suspicion of safety and welfare has been violated in connection with the device. So I do think that there's a number of things that we have to look at when it comes to not just this policy, but the context of all of our other policies as well. And I'll point you back to what can occur. There's an article from the Redding Eagle, those of us who live in the community probably remember, where this gentleman was assaulted in 2012 because of rumors or information that was posted on Facebook. And he was then physically assaulted and injured quite badly. And I think that what I'd like us to do is just sort of step back and think a little bit more deeply about our use of the Internet. It wouldn't be unusual for us to take a look at the use of the Internet as almost a weapon in a certain sense, especially if you're in an industry where your reputation is paramount to your ability to be good at what you do, respected at what you do. So I'm just asking the board that we kind of look perhaps a little bit more deeply at this policy, the student handbook, the other policies that we have, and think a little bit more deeply about how we would think about the use of the Internet and social media by certain parties that have the ability to damage a person's reputation or potentially do something to their lives.
I just want to make one thought occasion, one comment that you made. And I think, you know, I think we're all aware of the situation you're describing. One of our teachers was, I think, a subject of what appeared to be a humiliating and embarrassing malicious online crime, or whatever, of a person. The one thing we were never really able to identify is that it was a student that actually initiated that. So it could have been a community member. You know, I'm not sure whether there was actually violation or anything. Certainly didn't appear to be that its origin was within the school district. And that's where I think the policy is intended to really have its major focus, its own exclusive focus. I mean, we have, I know we have very limited opportunities to really be able to deny folks their personal personal freedoms, you know, when it comes to activity outside of school. As long as you're not using district resources in total. So that's probably the critical point you're alluding to, is how do we get to protect, how we can protect folks without necessarily infringing rights within our responsibilities and rights? Am I reading it correctly?
Yeah, yes. But I do think we have to sort of look at the policy and the context of the student handbook, because I think it's sort of calling out or holding students accountable for perhaps different behavior than the policy calls for. I think we also know that some of the case law related to students and First Amendment rights calls out that under Supreme Court decisions, a school may not interfere with a student's right to free expression unless that speech materially and substantially disrupts the school environment, is done in a manner that is lube or vulgar, and is presented as endorsed by the school or community. So I think when we look at some of the things that we have seen, I would say, again, everybody can have their own interpretation of what lube and vulgar was. But, you know, I personally felt that some of these things that were put out there could have potentially fallen in that, you know, that category. So I just think we want to look at all our policies and just our student.
Well, I guess the question I have is, do you see, is there a reason, believe that we should not approve this policy? See, are you recommending table this policy? Are you making motion to table it? Or are you saying we should accept the policy, but also take a deeper dive in this policy and look at, see how it corresponds to the student handbook and spend more time with it?
The latter. I would support the policy, but I think we just need to sort of be more comprehensive in how we approach the issue.
Thank you. Any further discussion on policy eight fifteen? Okay, we motion on second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, business functions, Mr. Hermes.
It is recommended that the board school directors approve the following business functions items, one, two, three, and four, including budget transfers in the amount $591,078, as well as bids for projects for Jacksonville Elementary and for A1 High School.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Can I just have, perhaps Mrs. Guy, that you could explain to us the bid for the mechanical construction? Because I think it was about, well, I'm going to say $1.29 lower than originally estimated. Is that, did I take that right out of your email? Did I?
Right, the estimates, Rob, feel free to interrupt. The estimates that they gave in June 2019 for the projects at Lorraine and Jacksonville, the total before any assault cost was approximately $1.4 million. The bids had come in at possibly $3.4 million. So they're lower than what the estimates for purchases.
That's great, man. Great job, Ann. Great job, Rob.
Great job.
Yeah, KCBA is back there too. Great job, Russ.
U S D E.
All right, I'm taking it.
Any further discussion on the subjects? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Terrence.
Oh, there is one other thing, unless you want to do it at the end. But I don't think there's a business functions portion at the end of the A. I spoke with Dan earlier today. Well, John, we have a business functions meeting that will be on the 21st of January before the voting meeting. It'll be at six o'clock. And if you check your inbox, you'll have a meeting for me with a working agenda as well as some notes about, but that's my hall. So I look forward to having as many of you guys there as possible. Probably the biggest highlight for other members of the board will be an opportunity to reflect on the community stakeholder budgets, including that as far as side of the board.
Thank you. Personal committee, Mrs. Wilson.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approve or verify the following personnel items. Number one, regulations of support staff. Number two, appointment of support staff, extracurricular staff, certificated substitutes and support substitutes. Three, change of status of administrative staff and support staff. Four, a leave of absence. Five, tentative agreement between the school district, Exertentive School District Workers United, SEIU, and the Exertentive School Board Director. And the Exertentive School District Board of School Directors for the period of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022. And also the course retention and staff conduct.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, what I'm pointing out is the change of status for administrative staff. Kristi Koble will be going from her position at the high school to the Reifton School as the assistant principal. Now, Kristi, are you back there? Do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you. I've been anticipating this, and I've been in the work. So I'm an emotional support teacher at the high school currently. I want to thank everyone who's been involved in this process and having faith and believing in me to make a bigger impact in this community. I live in the district. This district has blessed me, and I'm ready to give back and help out at the Reifton Building with Dr. Fries. Very much looking forward to help out with the math intervention aspect, because I know that's something we have talked about a lot. So thank you all, and I greatly look forward to starting the position.
When is this going to start?
Should we start on the 20th?
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would say we'd probably be looking forward to seeing you more often. We see all the time.
I'm going to New York.
Congratulations. Welcome to the administrative team. So I think we're about to 89. School functions, Mrs. Stratt.
It is reported that the below items filters occur within six to nine radius have been approved. And then we recommend that the board school directors approve the following student functions items. I'd like to do A, C, and D.
Second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say quick that I think that we're very fortunate to have a very private community program. This has been a longstanding student exchange, one that I participated in. And I think that, you know, not only are we as a district blessed to have this opportunity to learn from a different culture, but I think our students are really blessed to have a distraction for two weeks or so, maybe more, of students coming from Merschburg in Germany. And I'm in BS, I wish I could be in Spain.
Thank you, Mrs. Stratt. Okay, we're going to move into committee reports, and I realize that... Oh, I'm sorry, you're going to... I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
We didn't vote on mine.
We didn't vote on B. We didn't vote on B. We didn't vote on the part. Okay, so we have a big motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following student functions items, E.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, you touched extension. One extension, so it's... It'll pay a little. Okay, now, now we have committee reports. We have had some changes in our committee assignments with new board members and the reorganization process. So I recognize that folks might not necessarily be prepared for any type of committee report, but you're certainly welcome to speak to any of these. We'll sort out with the athletic committee, Mr. Pena.
Thank you, Dr. Heimerger. I am glad to be back as the head of athletics after a two-year hiatus. I do have a report from Mr. Legat. It's just safe to say that most of our winter sports are underway. Things are going well. I'm not going to give you all the details here right now, but I'll just general look over the next couple of weeks and see how we're doing there. I will say that my intent over the next year is to try and get us together a little bit more frequently. I didn't get together, for example, when I was the athletic chair either. But I would like to try to also align athletics a little bit more with student functions and extracurricular, to really see, especially with like the bargaining agreements, etc., and how we handle some of these, and perhaps empathize these things a little bit more together.
Excellent. We look forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Pena. Curriculum programs and curriculum committee, Dr. McFlunster.
The curriculum committee met two weeks ago, on December 3rd. Two things that were discussed. The first thing was professional development that is scheduled for January. And it's the conference style. And there are four strands. The strands are instructional technology, differentiation, diversity and equity, and data decision-making. And teachers can move around through those strands. And you can do, most of the sessions will be presented by Exertentive School District staff. And I really liked, I really liked this plan to do this. I sat through, when I was an education, sat through professional developments that dictated that you have to be at this one, and they have to be something that was of value or that you needed to do. So I really appreciate how this evolved.
Thank you.
And then we had an overview presented by Mr. Campbell of the DAP program. There were some questions and concerns raised by some of the community members. And so this was addressed, and Mr. Campbell and his team, about DAP data dating from 2015 to 2019. And what does it have, you know, trends? One of the things is, they found, is that there was increase in participation and performance in most cases, not all, but in most cases. And that, this PowerPoint was sent to you, so you can look at that and get more detailed information. They're going to continue to try to increase participation, especially with the underrepresented groups, more reaching out, you know, to parents with information. And they're also going to continue to look at the data, explore the data even deeper, and, you know, in terms of performance, the block scheduling, and that's another. So our next meeting is Tuesday, January 14th.
Thanks, Dr. McFlunster. So is committee, Mr. Pena.
I don't have a report, except to say that I'm glad to be chairing this committee. We have a lot of items, and we'll have them reviewed with you and with others. We have to get reviews so we can set up meetings. I'm right now looking at some times a little of January for our first meeting. And...
That's great. We've worked a lot of things on the agenda.
Yes, we have.
Mr. Pena, in addition, I want to add something about facilities. I was going to make a motion that I move the board of school directors to accept the plaque dedicated to Garrett and Kylie Dawson as a gift under our district policy 702 from the Exert Community Education Foundation, and that the superintendent catalogs it appropriately for policy, and the board directs the superintendent to have the plaque installed in the senior high school at the most appropriate location near the photography lab.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
I just want to say, I believe at least that one of our meetings, this was tabled. You know, we heard from some people, we got some information, and there was supposed to be some more, some more to the process of this, and then we were going to bring it back in January. So I'm wondering how this is coming out now, and we're not waiting. You know, as we as a group have decided that's what we were going to do. So we were, you know, wondering what changed and why we're not waiting and going through the process of establishing a policy, advising policy, whatever we're going to be doing. But we had all agreed here, we had agreed here that this is what we were doing.
And my understanding is that the process, or I guess my position is, is the process can continue. This is a separate motion on the plaque as opposed to the policy. I think we're all, if the board is savvy enough, working with the administration and others to conduct two tasks at the same time. And I think that's what we're doing, and I think that's why I'm supporting it.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that is separate. I thought, can you clarify on that, Dr. Heimerger? Because I thought that was all part of the part of establishing.
Well, I think, you know, the board is, I suppose, at liberty to take action on any motion. They have to kind of gauge the values of that. Though my, from my perspective, isn't it, it's true. We had that conversation at, I think, our workshop. We tried to, really tried to settle on some of the language associated with memorials and how that fit into our policy. The board has had an opportunity to see sample policy from other school districts, had a chance to review some of the qualitative research and literature associated with memorials and best practice. And we were also, I think, in the process of trying to seek an opinion or at least a little more direction from the professional staff in terms of where they saw this. You know, the original policy was moving in a direction against, you know, permanent memorials. And, you know, in my way of thinking, I'm not sure whether we really got a full accounting from the administrative team, you know, for our secondary professional staff in terms of, you know, what their rationale was for, you know, remedy to the memorial and certainly permanent types of things like statutory commerce and the like. I mean, you could see the recommendations in the research that we're talking, you know, about precautions associated with that. And I thought we were moving in that direction. So I have to say, I'm fairly disappointed with the foundation's decision to kind of move this forward. It suggests to me that they're not really being sensitive to where we are as a district, or as a board, on what we're trying to accomplish. I got a sense of patience on their part. I think it's better to do things right than it is to do things fast. And I think this represents, I think, circumventing and maneuvering around, you know, the board process. I'm disappointed with the foundation and recommendations. I also, I don't see whether, I don't agree that 702... I also, I don't see whether, I don't agree that 702 is applicable. If you read the provisions of 702, it's pretty clear that the language does not talk about memorials as, as gifts to the district. It really represents a whole separate category, hence the need for a policy. So I advise, you know, I'm advising them that this is not, this is not applicable at this time. It's really not a proper motion or request. I'm not so sure whether we want to start to get into this practice of the Board of approving every memorial request that comes, you know, through. I think that should be a, personally, I think that should be a process that incorporates the opinions and the sensibilities of secondary administration and professional staff in making those decisions and in negotiating in terms of whatever the memorial would be, and not necessarily, I think we're micromanaging here. So that's how I see it, and I would just advise the Board that, that I think we're establishing, I think, a misguided precedent. Any other comments, Ms. Pidler?
Yeah, I think it's only a precedent till we do something again, so I support this decision. I think that we, this motion, I do believe that, you know, I've heard a lot of people talk about putting emphasis on the Exeter Community Education Foundation to do all that it can to assist us in trying to address some of our financial shortcomings. And while I think that's a very heavy lift for them, anybody who has any familiarity with fundraising works knows that you want to recognize folks who make contributions to you in some way, so I was.
I don't see that we're not, you know, wanting to do what you just said with the foundation. What I see is that, you know, we have agreed to follow procedure and policy and take a look at this in January, so it's not saying we don't want to do, you know, to honor that, or we want to have a plaque or not have a plaque. I see it as, as the Board following procedure and policy. We expect everybody in the district, all the staff and everyone in the district to follow procedure and policy, and as the Board are saying, we're not going to do it.
You know, I guess I'm just a little bit confused, because we don't have a policy that we adopt. The only board action that was taken was to table the policy, and the tenor of that was really to discuss it further. These actions are not the same, they're separate. We're accepting a gift, a real property that was purchased with private funds from the end foundation under policy 702 that specifically allows us that right under statute. And I don't really understand why there is this hesitation with trying to get into this practice, because this is something that has come up in the past and will undoubtedly come up in the future. And I think that that policy is going to be informed by the Board's previous practices in doing things like this, which is already under policy. I don't understand why we would restrict our actions that are permissible under policy by policy that is not passed yet by the Board. So I would disagree with this.
So I, you know, I think I would disagree with your interpretation of policy 702. When I, when I read it, you know, the primary emphasis of 702 is, refers to gifts as supplies and equipment to enhance or extend the programs in the schools. I'm not so sure whether that, to me, is the definition of a memorial. That's more a definition that really implies that this is going to have some enhancement through equipment and supplies. So where you're, where you're coming off with the gift interpretation, I'm not quite so sure. I see, I see this clearly memorial. If you read definitions of memorials, you know, this is, this is, there is absolutely no question that this is a memorial, it's not a memorial. What if we don't, memorials in the past, it's really been a function of the building to make those decisions. It hasn't gone through the building. And if the building, you know, is in a position to do that right now, if they would say, yes, we'll accept it and we'll, and we'll install it, then I think that's, I can find that, actually, because we were right, we don't have a policy on the memorial right now. Right now, the precedent, the only precedent is that they, they have developed organically within the building process itself, so the administration and staff have really had a lot of trouble of actually establishing memorials, from what I know. And there aren't many memorials that exist in schools just like that. The other thing I'm a little concerned about is that we were, we were talking about being consistent, we're talking about being equitable, and I think, you know, this particular motion does not, to me, satisfy those conditions of, of equality and consistency that we're going to find in what we do with requests on this. And I think that's what the policy was really intending to try to find out, was how do we do this in an equitable manner, so that all schools, every school, regardless of their needs are recognized and accounted for.
I was just wondering why we, what's the urgency and why we couldn't wait until January to finish the, you know, the process and, you know, the implementation? What's the urgency to do it now instead of waiting to finish the process that we have talked about?
I, I would think that there is an urgency. I think there's a perception of an urgency. This has been an event that has been ongoing since, I believe, July, oh, sorry, August. It was discussed at community foundations meetings, I think, several times over the past three meetings? I think it was three meetings. This has been something that the Board has been talking about for the last two months. And I think that there's a perception of an urgency or impatience that I'm not sure is completely forehanded evidence here.
So can I say that the funding, the $10,000 that's already being used, have already been directed for the use to, I think, address what Dave just read about the, the plaque is not the gift, the money's the gift, and the gift is going toward the development of a student activity, correct?
I would agree. I would agree that the money is, is the gift, the plaque is the.
The money is flowing through the Exeter Foundation, though it's not coming to the district.
Yeah. But it's.
But it's going to, yes, it's going to the activity that is run by the district.
And, you know, on 702, the underlying statute for talks about the property, and that's really what this is, is a physical piece of property that was bought or gave away using private funds, being asked to be accepted as a gift by the district, and it is under our discretion to use.
I just want to say, I've been with this long thing, but I don't feel like we really all just that I would approve that, basically, and that I appreciate the end foundation, and that I just feel they're sensitive to this family, and for that reason alone, I believe.
I just want to say, I'm going to probably abstain from this one, because I really don't know the whole full details, the whole process, so I'm going to.
Okay, one question. I'm going to move into a, let's use any attraction. I request the, oh, 78. I'm not sure what's necessary. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. We have two notes. Dr. McLeod, I'm six-two, and no good guesses. Personal committee, Mrs. Wilson.
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Policy committee, as we were just discussing, the policy committee will, and now Mr. Miller is on the policy committee as well, so we will be actually picking up this discussion on policies, 701, 702.1, which are just the memorials. And I believe our time runs to January, so by mid-January, we'll try to get together with, you know, with this staff and, and try to resolve the policies for the memorials. And of course, we'll continue with our policies. We're in the eight hundreds now, which is good, good progress, and hopefully we'll wrap that up, and then we can start going through it one more time. So that's all from my report. Student functions committee, Mrs. Stratt.
I don't know that he reported that the data extended to be the chairperson this year, and that Ann's going to be joining me, because when I was elected to Board, Ann and I had spoken, and she had some great ideas, so I feel like, together, we can make some good things happen. If any point you may do you want to say, just with my name right now listed, you know, I appreciate your help, and go for it.
And if I could have Mrs. Stratt, there's another committee meeting this Thursday at 1:00.
I was going to put that under the parent form.
Oh, sorry. I did not mean to.
Yes. I'll repeat it, I like.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Stratt. Technology committee, Mr. Miller.
Well, considering I just started today, so, I didn't get a chance to talk to Joseph Way, and we're going to probably get together and talk to, talk about, we can do technology wise. Actually, the community foundation, Dr. Hare.
I do have a report from Amy Lutz. Bear with me. I'm still recovering from business as well. Here we go. This last month has been a full and busy month for ECEF at year end, as with many nonprofits. Our EITC program sits now at 21,900, which is a record for ECEF. We'd like to acknowledge First Priority for their $25,000 contribution, Customers' Bank for their $5,000 contribution, as well as Scarrow and Sons for their $10,000 contribution to our EITC program. On December 9th, ECEF deposited a $10,000 check from Melissa Dawson to be used for Exeter's photography club via funds from the family account and memory of her children, Garrett and Kylie. ECEF will work with Mrs., I'm sorry, Ms. Courtney Harper at other senior high schools to allocate funds for our own chain fund for the photography club. This month also saw our first donation towards a bench at the Eagle's Nest, thank you to Mr. Harry Kennel and family. All benches at the Eagle's Nest are a joint fundraiser between ECEF and the Alumni Association. In addition to this project, base two of the named for its fundraiser at the Eagle's statue in front of the senior high school are open for purchase. Sales room will be open until late spring, with install happening before the start of the 2021 school year. A very special student just donated $635 to ECEF to allow for the purchase of a new swing for the multi-disability room at Abanti Creek. Warren Mitchell, before being as a student, family would like to personally deliver a swing to the great staff in the spring. Finally, last but not least, ECEF is proud to welcome this Amy from the Alphaz delivering ECEF board. We're excited to work with Mrs. Morgan, her addition makes our Board so full of 26 members of state.
Thank you, Dr. Hare. ECTC joint operating committee, Dr. McLeod.
So I'm happy, Mr. We continue to be on ECTC board, and it's not just through the directors. So we met yesterday, January 12th. We got a budget update, and they have an average increase of 1.53% of the increase across the district, and our Exer is lower.
It is, it's still a zero. It's still a zero.
What?
It washes out.
Oh, so it's not even?
I don't believe so. I have to ask this question.
ECTC, I didn't get the ECTC.
ECTC, yeah.
I thought you said that it was.
It's a three-year average, so it ends up being, even though it's an increase, it's virtually no increase to us.
But you said it was lower than that.
We're much lower than they have to. We have some students, we don't have as many students, we have a three-year average.
All right, so ECTC is working on becoming a registered apprenticeship provider. They have presented that day, but we had a meeting that morning at the Center for State. If they approved for that, they would be a hug. They started with electrical, and they're going to add HVAC, they want to add HVAC and structures to follow that. I talked a couple months ago about the National Skills USA winners. They, I think it was two of them, that are going to be going on, going to compete internationally. We got an update on the house. I think the house was ready to go, you know, in market, but it's.
It got pushed a couple of months.
Right, so they're looking, so we actually, we saw it's nearly complete, looks like they have a lot of interior, not a lot, but they have some interior work. The expected completion date is January or February, but in the meantime, they did break ground on the fourth house. They think they have, is it like 20?
There's 20 lots in there.
Correct, there's 20 lots, so they have been, they already broke ground on the house number four. Also, I talked to you a couple months ago about the dual enrollment with Penn College. They were looking at, you know, getting that approved, and the way students would be able to get, in certain programs, they'd be able to get college credit. So they actually got through the first step, a big step, with all slated courses were approved. At East Campus, there's going to be nine programs with 10 courses, and students can earn up to 24 credits. At West Campus, they have five programs, five courses, and students can earn 12 credits of that, so that's, you know, a major good thing. There's some more steps to complete the process. And the other information, we had, at your seat, you had the joint operating committee meeting, so those other ones are, we can just, I wanted to point out. Next meeting we have there is January 20th at the East Campus.
Thank you, Dr. McLeod. ECIU Board of Directors, I was unable to attend the meeting, the last, last month's meeting due to conflict with the budget meeting had a regular. The next meeting is, is Thursday, and we're having the budget meeting regularly, so I'm going to try to get to the ECIU Board meeting after, after people speak briefly in the meeting on Thursday night. The next meeting is the 19th for the ECIU Board of Directors. Legislative liaison, Mr. Pidler.
The risk of sounding like I broke the record, I'm just getting started with this initiative too, in fact, I'd love to, you want to have a call, you perhaps not, to see guidance, what our strategies are, and what our, it sounds good.
Thank you. Township burles, Mr. Pidler.
Thank you, Dr. Amber. I did, Hunter, who else was with us? Pan, the township.
Yep, it was just. Jason.
Jason Dean. We attended the Exeter Board of Supervisors meeting, in which Sergeant Benz, the Traffic Safety Unit of the Exeter Police Department, did a presentation as to some things that the PD would like to do, or junior high and senior on traffic to improve flow, but most importantly, to keep students safe. I think I recorded that and sent that to you guys, so I did listen to it a second time.
Sweet to the ear, that's very exciting.
And I also, we have some important work to continue to do with township. We need to connect with the borough again to St. Lawrence, but there's, it looks like there's going to be some exciting things happening at the township level, and I appreciate Hunter has my trust in the tenants, because I think there's going to be a lot of opportunity to collaborate with township, at least hoping to be able to do that going forward, because it's actually a very significant change.
Thanks, Mr. Pidler. I really appreciate the extra effort, because you also go through representing the board with their ideas, really helps to bring us closer. I'm wondering whether or not there's any value, right, of this, this entire board getting together, if you once or twice a year with the supervisors, just in the context of sharing and collaborating. Is that any news?
Are you leaving any notes?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I mean, I don't know if you want to bring that up, but I, I really see value in that, just, you know, we don't have too many opportunities to really, you know, talk directly with them, and I think we share so many things in common, but I don't know what's your value to that, to see.
Logistically, it would have to be a public meeting. They have a forum, we have a forum, and the same room is with five people and eight free, so that, it looks like it has to be a public meeting. But there are some things that Mike and I, one thing specifically that Mike and I pass back and forth, that may be of benefit to talking about if the Board, public setting, around development, that's potential, you know, maybe just understanding more than anything else to start off with.
Well, yeah, just thanks, thanks so much, Frank, for keeping us abreast of what's happening. Then we'll go on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Phillips. Thank you, Dr. Amber.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburgur. Uh, as usual, we're going to, uh, recognize some very talented students. Mrs. Ankerton had sent me an email, congratulations to the following students for their awards in the nature of novelty student art competition at the high school division. In the ninth, tenth grade category, first place, the Ashton New Waters, third place, Ella Carhart, in the 11th and 12th grade category, first place, Dylan Hoffner. Also, want to go a little bit further, uh, Dr. Mcleven had spoke about the professional development that'll be taking place in January, spoke with Dr. Winters this afternoon. We have 113 different offerings, uh, 76 facilitators will be on campus providing those offerings, 66 of which are district employees, and that program seems to grow every, every time we get home. Wanted to point out that we met as a district with the chief of police, Morris, and Lieutenant Schaefer, to, uh, talk about a collaborative training program with Safe to Say, Joe Wade was there as well, as well as Dr. Miller. Uh, and then we also had a, uh, discussion about an Alice training that we're scheduling, uh, for our full staff as part of our safety and security for in-service in May. Uh, more information will be provided for that, so the, uh, community is aware of what's going on when they see all the police cars there, the building.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Are there any other board members who would, um, who would like to be heard at this time? Mr. Pitten.
I, I would like to propose, in the interest of openness, community-mindedness, neighborliness, uh, and at this time, it seems most fitting, with three new board members, I would like to propose that, that each of us write a brief autobiography and include that on the website. Last year, when I first became interested in, uh, serving on the board, the first thing I did was go to the website, uh, to see what kind of, uh, to see who I might be working with, and, uh, what I found were, was helpful, but not as helpful as I hoped. I think there's a photograph, there's an email address, a list of, and all this community assignments, all to the good, but I think letting our neighbors, our community, know who we are, uh, particularly at this juncture with three new members, uh, would be something worth to consider, so I throw that out, and I don't know what happens next to, to do it, um, but, uh, I was hoping that we would be the pioneers of Berks County, but I looked, uh, around the community, and Topahopkin, uh, school board has done this, and they have brief biographies, or quite a lot of them, I assume, and, uh, so that's my suggestion.
Thank you. I mean, I just give myself, again, and I'd also like to kind of recognize the fact that you do have a journalism background, and, uh, I, I wonder whether or not, just thinking about your talents and how we may be able to take advantage of those to, to communicate better as a board, you know, with the community, I mean, we, we communicate through reports and minutes and that sort of thing, but, I mean, we never really kind of provide a, a, a friendly narrative, either in the newsletter, let's say, or any other part of our website, especially the part of the website that says schoolwork. So, uh, maybe you can give some of that some thought, too, in terms of whether or not we can take advantage of some other, you know, positive ways to outreach and, and the message to the community.
Absolutely, I, I mean, I've already thought of one idea, is perhaps have a board member write a column in the newsletter, I mean, we could alternate months, just kind of, some personal thoughts that are outside, and we could still speak into it at a good time.
I'm sorry, just going to add, if you would have that sent to Don Annapolis, she can take care of it.
Um, I'd be glad, in fact, I'll, I'll learn how to do this, how to submit it to everybody, but I, I took a crack at mine, and it came in under 200 words, uh, I don't think yours all have to be 200 words, if you can save them 10, uh, you know, the story about the old speechwriter, or the shorter speech you write that the longer it takes to do it, because it needs a lot of editing, um, I don't think we need to go much beyond that, but if someone wants to write a long article about it, I feel that's hard. The message is, uh, we want to talk to people who we are, but we're, we're just one of their neighbors.
And you're encouraging the new board members, correct, or you?
Well, I'd like to see, I like to see all mine, it's, it's an opportunity for the other six to sort of reintroduce themselves. Um, so, and what I started to say was I'd be glad to send mine around to all of you, you can, uh, use it as a model, or, or kick it out and do your own thing.
You better limit the number of words, because.
Some of us have more to write about.
Well, mine's long because I'm a user, so.
That was my implication that I was making, but I don't think that one would have been helpful. Mr. Pitten, thank you for that, uh, um.
Yeah, I just have a, I'm just going to react to the, you know, like I asked Dr. Phillips this afternoon regarding the December 19th presentation, if the board is going to be facilitating stakeholder interactions, I, I would like to at least try to get our hands on that information an hour ahead of time, so that we could help facilitate the conversation, I, I prefer not to get any information.
The presentation?
No, the questions.
Yeah, I would like, I'd like.
I have those set tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd like to see the questions, but I'd also like to see the presentation prior to, I mean, even if it's, even if I have to get there an hour and early, I don't need a day ahead of time, but if we're going to be facilitating a conversation based off of our presentation, I think that we have the responsibility to build the information here.
That should be written as well.
Yeah, same time tomorrow, I think it's the whole presentation, it's really structured the same way as the elementary, obviously, but it's a little different, and, uh, questions are different, there's not as many questions.
The format, the engagement. I just wanted to know what we're talking about.
I, I share with you this concern, so I'm grateful to get this, so it was possible.
I hope, I hope, um, I hope some of the homeless lawless may, it would be great, because we, we really need facilitators, and I'm assuming some of the middle fingers might.
Some, some, well, depending on the number of, uh, maybe numbers, we have more than enough for facilitation. We have the show of hands, I know you're going to be doing your thing, but.
Do we do your thing? So, okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, but you're going to be late, but you probably, you might be into the facilitation by the police, six, we need the six, so we're fine, we have double the amount of board members and facilitators. Yeah, so we're fine, based on our plan. Okay, any other, uh, board member, uh?
I just want to say, um, I thought there was a pair forum question, I mean, speaking, there wasn't, so in case he wasn't heard, there is an overfit committee meeting this Thursday at 1:00 here in the administration building, it's going to be held monthly, the third, uh, the third Thursday at 1:00. Um, just wanted to point out, I hope this was noticed for heated matters, but the third Thursday in January is also a release whistle, I believe, at 1:00, so I don't know if that plays into, I believe, the mother and me being able to be there, um, just wanted to throw that out, that, that may be a conflict, it may not, and maybe it'll bite off this Thursday, but we're trying to be more consistent with when we have those meetings, and trying to have a little bit more community involvement, um, as far as, um, speaking and saying your thoughts and, and more of a little discussion, and I'm excited for that, so, thank you.
Any other comments? At this time, I'll accept a motion for adjournment, if you would, if you would favor. For adjournment, thank you.